I'd like to call a meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody. Winter finally came this week, and I think it's gonna leave us in like a day or two, too. Had a little ice in the river, and that was pretty good. Uh, moving right along, roll call, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Here.
John Horvath?
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Artie Bryson?
Yep, I'm here.
Tom Kruger?
I am here.
Tom Fetter?
Here.
Karen Struffin?
Uh, abstinent excuse. All right, uh, moving right along, we got bills payable.
I'm making a motion to approve the bills payable. They amount of $133,899.92.
Support.
Motion, support. Do we have any discussions or questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Fetter?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Right now, we have any public comments relating to anything on the agenda. Um, if you had just public comments and things in general, that's at the end of the meeting, but anything that's on our agenda for tonight, you can, uh, we'll entertain any public comments. Seeing none, moving right along, uh, consent agenda.
Make?
Go ahead.
I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of minutes of the board meeting of February 1st, 2016, and the synopsis, reports, uh, check report, assessing department report, fire department, January police department report, water department report for January, planning commission 2015 summary, building zoning and cold enforcement for January. Also, we have a notice about a legis-
Legislative-
Legislative February update, and there's no communications or request.
Support. Okay. Any discussion, anything need to be pulled out or anything?
Yes, uh, on the minutes, excuse me, the minutes and the synopsis, on the second page of the minutes, I see that the motion is blank, and supported is blank, and I made the motion for adjournment, and, um, Tom Fetter made the motion, seconded the motion to adjourn down where we called for adjournment.
Glad we passed that one.
Yes, and I think, I think it was-
Or we'd still be in session. Are we still there?
I, uh, just to keep the-
Yeah.
Things right-
If it ain't right, then it ain't so.
I think it was around 8:30 that we finished.
Yeah. I have it written down in my notes, I apologize.
Okay. And then a synopsis, I never got a synopsis, is, is, did I just not get it, or was there not one?
I don't think we had one.
We just ran out.
Okay.
Your ass.
It was so short, we didn't make one.
It's probably in the basket.
Okay, anything else? Hearing nothing, all in favor of consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion carries. Supervisors report.
Oh, I can hardly wait.
I know it. Highlight of the evening. Our, uh, February 24th at 1 o'clock, I'm gonna do our yearly meeting with the road commission. I know, Joanne, you were talking about maybe going. Anyone on our board can attend that with me if they like to. You get a few free cookies from the county road commission. And, uh, we, they, they tell us, you know, what kind of matching funds we're gonna get, and, uh, and just what's coming down the pipe, and we started thinking about, you know, different road projects. We do have, um, Holland Road slated to be done this spring. Remember, we're trying to rap, or, or get, bid this out with the county bids, 'cause they're, it gets a lot cheaper.
Right, right.
You know, we figure we save 25, 30% instead of waiting until the middle of the summer to put him out. And, uh, we are looking at establishing a temporary kennel in the police station. There's a gentleman that's, um, wants to do some, uh, community service to, uh, he's going to, uh, he's trying, he's trying to, he's in Boy Scouts, he's trying to become an Eagle Scout for his Eagle badge, and he gotta do so many hours of, uh, community service, and, um-
Project.
Right, it's a project, not service. Thank you, there's a difference.
Big difference.
And, um, uh, we, with, we are tearing down a wall with this construction between the Sally ports, and, and we will have room for, uh, probably to house, you know, two animals, and, uh, he's doing all the legwork, and, uh, he's actually gonna do a little, uh, uh, funding for it, and, uh, I told him it would be really nice if we get some volunteers, if we do actually have to house them, that they come in and to take care of them, and he's gonna try to line all that up and everything, so-
The dog's gonna stay there-
For about a week.
Around the clock?
Yeah, yeah. What he's gonna do, um, is do a fundraiser for us to buy, uh, one of those scanners, I guess when they, they'll embed a chip. You can go to a vet and get a chip embedded, and he'll tell you who the owner is, and where they live, and all the things about the dog. And, uh, they're a couple hundred bucks, and he said he, he really wanted to, to, to go raise the funds to, to purchase that, so we, we'd have it here also.
Good idea.
Let's see, we're still working on, on the MERS issue, actually, we're just waiting, we got all, we're waiting for one little bit of information that should be settled. Working on the ALS issue still with Med Control, and, uh, let's see, what else is going. Everybody knows the Drake Bridge Company filed a permit with the DEQ to, uh, put a bridge over to Harson's Island. Originally, when that notice went out, there was only a 20-day, uh, period where people could, uh, comment, or, uh, or get information, or, or anything like that. Township, we wrote a letter to the DEQ asking them to have a public hearing, which they agreed to do. It's scheduled for March 9th at the Algonquin Elementary School at 7 o'clock, it's March 9th, Wednesday, it's the day after the primary elections, uh, at 7 o'clock in the auditorium. I'm gonna have it videotaped and put it on YouTube, so if people could watch it from their homes, and the DEQ is allowing, uh, writ, more comments 10 days after the public hearing, so you'll be able to send them a letter, call them, email them, uh, up to March 19th with any concerns or anything about that. So that's why I'm putting it on YouTube, so people in Florida or whatever can, uh, get a chance to check it out and, uh, get a letter in if they so choose. We are, uh, moving along with expanding electricity in, uh, in the park and putting up light pass. In fact, John, I forgot to tell you, you have your guys, they poured, uh, cement bases for the lights, and, uh, and I think we should put a cone over them, 'cause it might be, someone could trip over them, and where they're putting the plugs, too. I forgot to tell you, sorry about that. Part of the job, you know? And, uh, we also started the addition on the, uh, police addition. Uh, the footings are in, I believe all the utilities are moved, or, or they're being planned to move. They're gonna come and start the block work, uh, the 22nd. We didn't really want them, it all tore up during the winter fest and all kinds of equipment standing around there, so they're coming the, the day after the winter fest to start the block, and, uh, then they're gonna, they said that, that'll probably be done within a week, week and a half, so they're, they're ready to rock and roll on that. And we started the project also of upgrading, uh, council for the dispatch. Upcoming events, big winter fest coming this weekend, uh, we have Friday DJ Chili Cook-Off, I think that's about it on Friday. The horseshoes on Friday? No, Saturday.
Gonna be some, uh, the Algonac Hoop Troop will be there fire hooping Friday night.
Oh, okay. Friday, okay, that's fun. Then, uh, Saturday, uh, we got a kids' ice fishing contest, which isn't gonna be held on ice due to lack of, and so we're bringing in a, or I should say, I say we, the Pearl Beach Lions, this Pearl Beach Lions event, bringing in a, a tank, and they're gonna put about 50 or 60 trout in them that are gonna be hungry, and the kids can fish out of that. Not sure if the, our, how, what shape our ice is gonna be in for the figure skaters. It depends, if it's too soft, they pay, you know, the, those skates cost them about $1,000 to $1,500 apiece, so they don't want to, if it's soft, they're probably not gonna skate, but we'll check it out. But we still have, uh, the circus, uh, two circus shows, one-
Stripe Circus.
Stripe Circus, what time, is it 1:00 and 3:00?
I believe it's, well, 1:30 and 5, 1:30 and 5?
Yeah. And, uh, then at night, uh, great bands playing Soul Provider, and, uh, then Saturday, and there's food and vendors there, you know, all the whole time, too, and then, uh, Sunday, we have wrestling. It's not WWE, it's Extreme-
X-I-C-W.
X-I-C-W.
Extreme Intense Championship Wrestling.
Yes, the Rhino's gonna be here, some other guy that's supposed to be, uh, big-time wrestler, and Cindy and Joanne are gonna wrestle. No, just kidding, but it's gonna be a good event. Like to mention, too, I know it's early, but I just got the email, uh, July 23rd, uh, boats for vets, it's gonna be at the idle hour at 9:30 a.m. What they do is, uh, they get a bunch of people to, to volunteer for, uh, boats, and they get a bunch of vets, I don't, they used to get about 100, 150 vets, and, uh, basically go around and give them boat ride for the couple, three hours. And I was gonna, if it's okay with the board, I'm gonna, we're gonna, unless something's going on, we're busy, we're gonna commit, uh, one of the, the fire boats, and also our police boat to give some vets a ride, and I'll probably be there with my boat if I, if I'm able. But it's a great event, they've been doing it for a while, take them out for a couple, three-hour boat ride, then they go back and have a nice lunch at the idle hour. And also, I don't have a time, but DTE is going to be in Clay Township this spring, trimming our trees. And, um, they sent me a flyer, I, I'll put it online, and, uh, have some at the front desk, of basically what they would consider, uh, is in their right of way, and how they're gonna trim it. If they have to take a tree down or drastically cut a tree, they're gonna actually send a letter to the homeowner to warn them, but, uh, if, if, uh, if it's just gonna be trimming on the tree, they're just gonna go and do it, it is their right of way, and if it's in their right of way, they're gonna, they're gonna trim it. So, that's all I have. Oh! Also, this weekend during the winter fest, on Saturday, the log cabin's gonna be open for tour. The Algonac Clay Historical is gonna open the log cabin, too.
The Saturday?
Yes. So, okay. I believe 1 o'clock, but I'll double-check with that tomorrow, I got an email. Okay, moving right along, we don't have anything on the unfinished business. Uh, we have building and zoning enforcement hearings, we have three buildings. Uh, the first one is 8080 Anchor Bay Drive. Do we have, uh, Susan Wines, or anyone from them here? Sid, you wanna give us lowdown on?
Well, you've got information on it, they-
Yeah.
The hearing was held- The hearing was held at November or December, per the ordinance, and, um, no one showed up for that hearing either, they were properly posted, and that was before the board to take action for, um, whatever, you know, demolition or whatever you want to do.
Right. And you believe it's beyond repair, 50%?
Close.
Yeah.
They would have to come in with some pretty good plans to-
Right. And we have no communication from them?
None.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Sid? With the board's pleasure.
What do we want, a motion to demolish the thing?
Yeah.
Is that it?
We have to give them 60 days?
There, there's a procedure following tonight's meeting in the ordinance, and we take that, and then after that point, it's, it automatically can be taken care of.
Right, we, we have to notify my, we give them 60 days, come in, if they can make Sid happy, and then, uh, um, well, if Sid issues a, a building permit for it, it, uh-
Puts this on hold.
Yeah, it puts, it puts the demo on hold, but if they don't fulfill their obligation with their permit, then it, it doesn't come back to us, we just, you know, go and take it down.
And then we take it down, and put it on the-
Right.
On the taxes.
If I understand this correctly, if we make a motion tonight, he goes about his business, tells him what to do and how to do it.
Right.
If they come in and get a permit, they've got X amount of days to do it?
They have 60 days to come in and get a permit. And then, it, it depends on how long of a permit Sid gives them.
But isn't this the lady that came in here months ago and asked us to help her, and-
No.
No, that was, no, that was, that was Colony.
On Anchor Bay Drive, I mean, on Colony. That was Colony.
All right.
She did come in and get a permit, but they've done nothing since they got their permit.
Okay, that's all, and I'm happy with that.
Yep.
What's the timeframe after they get a permit that we will be strung out?
It was always under everybody's impression that they had six months, and then they could ask for extend, or, we could grant them an extension. After a meeting that I was at two weeks ago at the state level, they get six months, if they don't request it, we are not supposed to go out and solicit people to extend their permits. At the end of six months, if they haven't started, permit is null and void, they have to apply for a new one and start all over again. In this case, if they haven't started at the end of six months, if they get a permit, then it would automatically just be demoed, because there would be no extension.
You're saying it can go on forever, really?
No, if, but they have to apply in writing for an extension of permit. The new attorneys that they have up at the state now have said, "You do not solicit for an extension from the building department," that's illegal. The permit holder is supposed to come in with, or send a letter in, in writing, asking for an extension, which is six months.
To you.
To me, and then it's my choice whether or not I extend that or not. It isn't an automatic extension.
How long has this been going on?
This one is, is brand new. This one we cited in, I think the hearing was in November, February, December.
Okay.
And, and it's gone through the processes, so now it's, this is the first time that it was here. It, it could have been here a month ago, but the problem, or, a meeting ago, but it was too cold, put the stickers on, they wouldn't stay on, so we had to wait a week, and, and which we missed the meeting, but that, you know, because the, the, uh, stickers don't stick when it's bitter cold, you know, so, because we do have to post them, we have to post the buildings.
I mean, I'm just concerned that these things, I've been here long enough, said that you know that some of these things go on for years and years and years.
And, and, under the old ordinance, it did.
It did, that's why we changed it.
And, in fact, the new, the new building code that came out, technically, we could do away with this, and I could streamline it into two weeks, but I think this is a pretty good deal, because it goes through the procedure, you know?
Yep, we don't wanna take lightly tearing down someone's house-
No.
-structure on their own prior property.
I don't want that, I want this procedure.
I don't think anybody does, but it, it just seems, you know, it just, some of these things just take painstakingly long.
They used to.
And, and once they learn the system, they just milk it to death.
You're right, and, and this system is fairly new, we, we've got a couple, I think, that are scheduled to come down, we've had people come in and get their permits and actually fix their buildings, you know? So, I mean, we're getting some, you know, I, I was telling Cindy earlier, I had one that was going to go on the next batch, and the gentleman came in last week, I hadn't even, yeah, and I hadn't even talked to him, but he's got all the plans, and he's gonna submit the full plans, he's, he voluntarily, he knew it needed to come, and so he's tearing it down, he's gonna do it all over again this year, so, you know, people are, are listening, and they, they know they gotta start addressing this.
Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, I guess, order the demolition of 8,000, 8080 Anchor Bay Drive, the, um, the, uh, boathouse there on 8080 Anchor Bay Drive.
Support.
Okay, we have motion of support, any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Fetter?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have 8713 Anchor Bay Drive. Arn, Arnett Field? Is there anyone here from, uh, Arnett Field from 8713 Anchor Bay Drive? Hearing none?
This is the same situation as the last one.
Yeah.
They didn't respond to the first letters that we sent out, it was posted, and, um, no, it's for you for action.
I drove by, I mean, they, they, they are rough, that's for sure.
I'll make a motion to order the demolition of 8713 Anchor Bay Drive.
Support.
Okay, we have motion of support, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Tom Fetter?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, next, we have, I should be saying, these are DB 2015 010.
Can I, can I stop you for a second?
Yeah.
But instead of making a motion to demolish the address, could we make the structure? Well, in this case, it's the boathouse.
Right, that's true, too. We get the right structure?
Or cite the case number, and then-
Right, I know.
That's why I, I should be straight stating, uh-
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna raffle the houses, believe me.
Okay, we have DB 2015 010, 010, 2095 Columbine Road. Now, I talked to John McClane, this was before Christmas, and he told me he wanted to fix this barn.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure, I, I, I assume that he was residential of agriculture, kinda have a farm status, and he said, well, if, if that's, he, he said if he's, as a farm, he doesn't require a building permit. I said, well, if that's the case, I, I don't know if it's true or not, but if that's the case, then you at least have to give something to me in writing of what you intend to do, and I'll give that to Sid and make sure it, it satisfies.
And that technically is not a barn, that's just a, a three-sided shed.
Right, it's, it's a lean-to.
And he's not agriculture either.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure the status, but-
I, I talked to John-
Okay.
A week ago, and again today. He was gonna call you, Artie, and obviously he didn't get ahold of you, but, um, he claimed, he's claiming the Right to Farm Act, and he may or may not fall under that, but from my research, the Right to Farm Act exempts you from building permits, does not exempt you from making sure the zoning is, you know, that, that the setbacks are correct.
Right.
It also does not exempt anyone from blight and/or dangerous buildings. It allows you to build these, but it doesn't exempt you from, you know, it doesn't say that you don't have to maintain.
So I was, yeah.
And, and John told me today that, he says, well, I told him, I said, "You should be here tonight." He says, "I'm not gonna be there." He says, "And if they vote to tear it down," he says, "We'll see us, I'll see you in court." I said, "Well, that's your choice, it isn't mine."
See, that's been going on for eight years.
I, it's been going on for a lot of years, I know, and I've talked to John many, many, many times, and he's never-
And he's my neighbor.
I know.
I know him for 60 years, I mean, it's, but it's just, if we're gonna have these laws, that we have to do it for everybody, whether it's me, you know, when-
You're next.
And, and Mister, I, I can tell you about-
My brother should be next.
Believe me, you know, I went through living-
I, I know.
-for Jesus.
I know that, and this building is an eyesore, it, it's, I think it's very unsafe, so, you know, I mean, it, it may not stop with a, a demolition order, but at least it's a step closer to getting something taken care of over there.
Okay. Any more questions for Sid on this?
I'm making a motion to order the abolishment of 2095 Columbine Road, the accessory structure on that piece of property.
Support.
Yeah, motion of support, so, I kinda was right, if he is under the free of my information, or the-
Right to Farm.
Right to Farm, free of my information, that, uh, he may not require a permit, but he, he at least has to tell us what he's gonna do.
Well, yeah, and, and he's gotta maintain.
Get a plan.
Yeah.
Which, which, which he failed to do, so. Okay, uh, any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Fetter?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Sid.
Uh, next, we have a resolution, uh, for Clay Fire to provide primary ambulance services and transport. Okay. Cindy and I have been working on this, our, uh, attorney basically said that we need a formal agreement, the township with the fire department, and then we're talking more and more about it, it's like, we can't do a contract with them, because, well, it, it is part of us, like, you know, it's not a separate entity, if they were a, a separate company, or, or, uh, or with IRA or something, that we could, but, uh, she said what really needs to be done is us pass a, a resolution stating that, um, we want this. I mean, we wrote letters to, to Med Control, uh, the board gave me the authorization to write a letter that's saying, "Hey, we want this," but the attorney said, trying to dot the i's and cross the t's, says we should do this resolution to, uh, to, uh, make it so, and there's no question about it.
I'm making a motion to pass a resolution to provide primary ambulance services, ALS response and transport to Clay Township citizens.
Support.
Okay, motion of support, any discussions or questions on this?
They, they looked this over?
Yeah, this came from our, yeah. Yeah, we kinda wrote one and sent it to them, and Cindy did, and, you know, they changed it a little bit, and, um, Cindy worked her butt off this weekend, uh, we put together a packet, it was about three and a half inches, Daryl helped a little bit.
A little bit.
No, and, uh, got it organized, and, uh, and, uh, brought, I actually hand-delivered it up to the attorneys, uh, this morning, just to try to streamline, uh, or, you know, save time with, for the attorney, and, uh, I don't know, we'll see what happens, so. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Fetter?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, moving right along, the Clay Historical Soci, Society would like to use the park August 6th, Saturday, 2016, they're not gonna be actually using the pavilion, so, um, we could still rent the pavilion out, it's just gonna be pretty crowded. Oh, that was Sid, that was a typo, that was-
That's crossed out.
Yeah. That wasn't part, we just blew it off. So, um, they, we, the, the pavilion will still be available to rent- So, the, we, the pavilion will still be available to rent. This is primarily on the other side of the park. And, you know, they, they have vendors come in and sell their wares. And I think this is their third year doing it. We allow them to take their cars in to set up, but they got to stay there until the event's over with. I always get nervous of cars going around in the park when, when there's, you know, people, a lot of people in there. And so this is a request to do that. And also waive charges. They should have put that in there. I think these events are good. I, I don't want to get a lot of them because it is a park primarily. That's my own personal, but I'd be in favor of this. So, does anyone want to make a motion or?
Do you want a motion for that?
Sure. If, if, if the, if the board so accuses.
Well, if you want one. I'll make a motion that we let the Clay Historical Society use the park, not the pavilion.
Right.
On eight six of sixteen.
With the charges waived.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support to Algenack Clay Historical Society to use the park Saturday, August sixth, two thousand sixteen. Any more discussion?
I'm sorry, did you say to use the pavilion or not to?
No, not to use the pavilion. They don't need that.
Did you read this email?
That was a different one.
Okay.
That's the next one.
All right.
Okay. They're getting ahead of us.
Sorry.
No, no biggie. Uh, okay, I reiterate the motion. Everyone understand it? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have Summer Reading Kickoff. It's through the schools. And this is kind of a new event. I'm not sure exactly what it entails, but they're, they want to do an old-fashioned picnic with relay races. It's basically a kickoff to their summer reading program. And it's, it's all going to be for children twelve and under. And of course, their whole family. They're going to provide refreshments and supposed, they're supposed to bring their own picnic baskets. Basically, they want to, and this will be, they will be using the pavilion. And they wanted permission to use the park that day and waive the charges. It is a, a thing through the schools.
When you say use the park, what are they going to do? They're, they're going to have races and stuff like that?
Yeah. Yeah. It's like old-fashioned picnic. They're going to relay races, probably, you know, potato bag races.
No cars.
No cars. They're not going to be hawking anything or anything else. It's just their kickoff, a kick, fun kickoff party for their reading program for the summer.
Sounds like a good thing.
Yep. It's called Summer Reading Kickoff Sports Event.
I'll make a motion that we allow the park to be used for the summer reading kickoff on June the eighteenth.
Support. And we're going to waive their fines?
Waive their fines.
For our fees.
Fees. Their fees.
We'll get them and we'll fine them.
Later.
Yeah, we'll find them later. Okay, we have a motion for, for the use of the park June eighteenth for the summer kickoff reading program. Fees are waived. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Everyone knows that, you know, there, we had a Supreme Court Justice pass away and there's going to be a tough approval saw for, for our new Supreme Court Justice. And, and we have another tough appointment to get past this board. Mary Jane Harding, she's been on the library board since nineteen ninety-one?
Since it started.
Since it started.
A long time.
A long time. And she wishes to be reappointed. And so I, I'm recommending that the board reappoints Mary Jane Harding to the Algenack Clay Library Board.
I'll just work that.
Okay, I guess I made that motion and support. Any discussion? Wave hi to Mary Jane back there if you don't know. Okay, any more discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Want to say anything about the library or?
Just that it's going along wonderfully. They have so many nice programs there. The Friends of the Library are going to have a fundraiser in April. Dinner at the Planning Grill. And then fifteen percent of the proceeds will go towards the Friends of the Library.
Do you know when that is?
I think it's April twenty-first.
Okay.
I will bring you a flyer in when we get there.
All right, I'll announce it. If you, if you didn't hear at home, Mary Jane says everything's going great with the library. They got all kinds of fun programs going. There's programs for every age group. And the Friends of the Library, we believe it's April twenty-first, but we'll, we'll clarify on that.
Yeah.
Is, is having a fundraiser at the Flaming Grill. And if you go there, part of the proceeds go back to the Friends of the Library, which I think, are they still talking about building a shed back there?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know they're, they want to raise some money. They have a storage issue. Want to put a shed out behind the library. So, all right, thank you, Mary Jane.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, that's all done. Now we have public comments. Does anyone have any public comments they'd like to make? About anything? Come on up, chat. Come on up and say your name and address and?
Jack Ray. I live on eight eight one six Volker Road, down by Jack Construction or Jack Storage. And I understand they're putting machinery back in there and batting cages and stuff. And I was wondering why none of the residents around there were notified about this.
Well, this is actually not a function of this board. It's a function of the Planning Commission. But it's not a new use. If they're going for a new use, it would, they would have a public hearing and people would be notified. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sid. And, but since they have, it's residential with special use of, of light industrial, is what I'm told. And because of that, they, they just have to go to the Planning Commission.
Well, we went to the last Planning Commission thing and they said, we don't have any rights at all down there.
Well, go ahead, Sid.
I can address that somewhat. About eighteen years ago, there was a lawsuit over the use of that building.
Yeah.
And we have a circuit court ruling that says that they can always have an industrial use in that building. That township, that our ordinances and that are superseded by the court hearing.
Even the zoning board can't?
Yes. Yes. And we've had the attorney check the ruling. A judge ruling that that building is always there for industrial use. So, it, it's nothing that we can do and, and the elected board has no, no say in it. It's the Planning Commission. And at the Planning Commission meeting a week ago or whenever, the person was remanded back to bringing in some changes to the site plan. And they're going to work on that. And everything may be totally different. He doesn't know what he's doing at this point. So, we've been in discussion with him, but he has not made any decisions.
Well, my wife and I went around to all the neighbors with an eye shot of that place. Nobody wants it down there.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want the noise and the traffic. And it just, it don't make any sense out in the middle of the country.
Right.
You know, or, I've been there for fourteen years. What's that going to do to my property value?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Nobody wants it down there. So, that's about I like us.
Understood. So, all right, thank you. Yeah, come on up and wave hi to everybody at, at home.
Okay, my name is Denise Wright, and I'm eight eight one six Volker. And I went to the planning meeting also. I had talked to people, you especially, in regards to, they wanted industrial. They also want it seven days a week. They want it from eight o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock at night, Monday through Saturday, eight o'clock in the morning till one o'clock in the afternoon on Sunday. I got a petition, which I gave to you, Artie. And we are asking for them to curd the hours of operations from eight to eight. I don't think that we're asking that much.
Right. Can, can they restrict hours?
Planning Commission, there's any restrictions on the use that they would, they choose to.
Right.
But they have to have a good reason for doing it.
Okay.
But we have nothing in the ordinance that restricts it.
Okay.
There's nothing in the, the court ruling?
No.
No.
Nothing at all.
That's why we came here to, to ask you that they get consideration.
Right.
How long ago was that ruling, Sid?
Around here.
How long ago was that ruling?
I gotta believe it was somewhere around seventeen or eighteen years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he was in the file. He found the file and showed it to the planner. He goes, our hands are tied.
We have the same situation on Mill Street.
On Mill Street, same thing. When people go to court, we're at the mercy of the judge.
Yeah, the cert, cert, circuit judge, they, they supersede us or the, the, our plan. I'm, not us, but our plan and ZBA.
There's a lot of residents really close to that building.
Right.
You know, so that's why.
I know the Planning Commission's going to do whatever they can to, to buffer it.
Well, the Planning Commission, I was there last time, said that they have every right, you know. They, they, in other words, they don't have any way of saying, no, they have to stop the industrial part of it and everything else at eight o'clock at night for the residents, too.
Mm-hmm.
When they said the hours, I went to give them the petition. They said, hold it. I don't want to look at it. I don't want to see it. It's not my problem.
Right, right. I, I, I took it from her.
Yeah.
So, and I'll double check with our planner. And he had, he was, he wasn't there that night. He was, had a root canal. And so our, our, our head planner, who was more, knew more what was going on with that case and see if we can get it restricted. But that's all I can do there. And I know the Planning Commission's looking to, you know, to put green space and barriers, you know, wherever they can on it. So, I know, I feel your pain, but... Any other public comments?
They still have to come up with what the Planning Commission sent them back.
Right.
They have to get that all straightened around.
Yep.
They said they were going to have it done by the next meeting, which is in one week.
Well, we haven't seen anything. I don't believe we've seen anything yet.
No, they said, the people that are going to be in that building said that they would definitely have it done.
Oh. Well, we haven't received anything back with them.
They're not going to have it done.
They won't have it done in time. So, they, they, they might want it to, but I know how things work. We're not always rabbits. We're tortoises sometimes, unfortunately. Okay, Mary Jane, you want any, any public comments? Okay. And you guys? Board, uh, board member comments? Oh, does anyone have anything they want to see on the next agenda? Anything special? If you do, let me know.
Board member comments?
Yeah. Board member comments. Mr. Fetter?
Me first. I hope to see everybody come out to the Winter Fest this weekend. There's a lot of different causes going on there that need to be supported. It's going to be a good time. Last year, we only had a couple months to plan it. This year, we had way more lead time. And I think it's going to be a very special event. So, we hope to see everybody out there.
What are the days and hours? It's going to run Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, right?
Right. Friday, it starts at six P.M. Chili Cook-Off. DJ will go on at nine.
And? Is that an example of his music?
Yes.
That should be a fine.
Nine until close. I don't know what time that will be. Saturday morning, it starts at eight thirty A.M. with the pancake breakfast. Till close. And then Sunday at noon.
All right. Wrestling's at three.
Yes.
Sunday, Sunday, Sunday.
Wrestling's at noon, is it?
Is it?
Yeah. Twelve thirty.
Okay. It's on our website.
Twelve o'clock.
All right, thanks a lot. Tom, do you have anything?
Nothing.
No? Joanne?
No, nothing.
No? How about you, John?
Just other than with this Flint thing, I just want to say something about our water. I noticed, I live on the island. We have this neighborhood thing. And there's a lot of comment about lead. And if I'm not mistaken, for the lack of a better word, I'm going to say plastic. And I know it isn't. It's a polymer. But most of our water system over there is all plastic. Is that right, John?
That's correct.
And could I stick my neck out and say if somebody had a major problem, they could talk to you?
Sure.
Okay. And that's, that, anybody that had that kind of a major problem could go to the water department and get an answer, the, the, knowledgeably.
We don't have all plastic, do we, John? There is some other stuff in the ground.
Cast iron, ductile iron.
Ductile iron?
PDC.
Okay.
Well, that, that Flint stuff was put in in the forties, I think, from what I can understand.
Yeah, the old, the ductile.
Yeah.
I mean, and all of a sudden, sixty years later, everybody's having a heart attack. Come on.
Yeah, their problem is they have a lot of lead stuff.
That should have been changed years ago.
Yeah.
I remember five years ago or something, when they started this no lead stuff, you were changing of stuff that, in the meters and things.
Our meters.
You know, so I, I know that we're up to square on it.
Yeah, the cost of those meters are, what, thirty percent more?
Yeah. Is what it is.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Cindy, you got anything?
I have?
For the election or anything?
No.
Okay. I'm trying to think if I have anything. I've been busy, but...
What are you talking about? You got a whole report already.
I know it.
Yeah, you, you had your thunder.
I already had my, my, my chance, my, my day in the sunlight here.
Do you need a motion? Do you need a motion?
Yeah, but we got to make sure it gets in the minutes.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Support.
Of, of February the sixteenth.
We have a motion of support. I'm not even going to ask you if you're all in favor or not. I know you are.
I have to.
Joanne? We don't have, actually, you don't have to vote on that.
Have you got an application for absentee ballot?
Hi.
I know it's getting late, but someone just...
I can print one off me.
Somebody just asked me and I said, I tried to get a motion.
There's one online. I can print for you real quick. I can print one online from online for you real quick. Give me a couple minutes. You can be on the side.
Has Sasha contacted you?